For garbage pickup, they did.
People were impatiently awaiting the acceptance of that road so that the services could be provided.
The bus, in particular.
Right.
It didn't preclude the town from sending a garbage truck up.
So, when you, when you said that part of the road has binder asphalt or kind of a first level, does that mean essentially that it's not?
So, tha- that binder course is the first course of asphalt they put down. When they go to put the final course on, that's another two and a half inches of asphalt.
When is that gonna go?
When they're ready to turn it over to the town. So, basically, if they're still, tha- they, uh, the large rock trucks are otherwise known as Yukes, we don't allow them on town roads. They're heavy and they can cause the road to break up. So, wi- they, the developer, obviously without not wanting to spend additional money, they're not gonna put the final course on. They'll, because if they have to do repair work to the sub layers, then, then they can easily do that. So, that'll, be probably be one of the last items that the developer does in terms of the public improvements before he requests the town to accept the road as a town road.
So, if, if we did forward a favorable recommendation as far as Peach Lane and, and the portions of Arbor Crossing, when, would the developer do that soon after the Board of Selectmen accepted that, or would it be?
So, so, basically, the, the public consists of, the, the pub- the public improvements consist of that paving, um, all the drainage, water and sewer. So, currently, we have a final course of asphalt on Peach Lane in that portion of Arbor Crossing from Pear Grove to Peach Lane.
Right.
So, we can accept, with that completed, the streetlights installed, the street trees, as per the subdivision approval, installed. The developer has now asked us to accept the road as a town road, 'cause all of those public improvements have been
Right.
installed and completed, to the town satisfaction.
And what is before us is just basically that section as referenced, not the future ones.
Right.
So.
Well, but is, is the portion that's got the binder asphalt, is that part of this?
No.
Okay.
No. So, from-
That's what I was misunderstanding.
Yeah, that's what- So, from the intersection of Peach Lane and Arbor Crossing to Holly Lane, around to Partridge Court, which all has binder course, is not on the table for export acceptance. And, uh, the reason for that is Partridge Court, some of those lots, they had contaminants in the soil as a result of it having been previously an orchard. Though, that material has to be remediated first, and it's currently, uh, the, the plan is that they have to travel, take these big, large trucks over Arbor Cro- a portion of Arbor Crossing to stockpile the material on a, in an area that will be capped. And, so-
So, anticipating a timeline of us, uh, forwarding a favorable recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, would the, is this gonna affect plowing if we were to get a snowstorm in the next few weeks or days? What, wh- can plows go on the road now?
No. So, technically, no. Uh, w- with-
So, winter's coming and, uh, if we get this before Board of Selectmen?
So, for instance, tonight, the developer is responsible for maintaining that road, providing plowing, salting, whatever it may-
Could you work out a contract for that service with the town, or would that have to be done by a private?
I- in the past, what we've attempted to do was to, i- in the event of an emergency, we would send a plow truck, and that cost we would forward on to the developer. So, I, I think, we, we try not to enter into those agreements, um, but that does bring up a good point. As we move forward on, on the Section Nine of our regulations and, and bonding, uh, we were looking at requiring a maintenance bond that the town could pull from
Right.
for, for those instances.
So, question. If we were to make a recommendation, a favorable recommendation to accept as written in the memo from Victor Benny to yourself, and that goes to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen would meet at what point? What's the timeline here?
Well, I would forward your letter to the Board of Selectmen-
Yes.
As fast as I-
When do they meet next?
Tomorrow morning, if I could.
Okay.
I mean, ideally, I would anticipate that they put it on their next agenda, uh, provided-
So, what happens if we get four feet of snow between now and that they vote on it? We will go with that maintenance, use that, utilize that and plow it and send them a bill?
No. No, the developer will plow.
Oh, they would still, you wouldn't even be involved in such a thing?
I would say, working, having worked with the carriers, um, I, I've had, it's been an actual pleasure, because every time I've asked them for something, they've supplied the information or done it. Um, I haven't, last year and the previous years that, since they've, they've owned the development, I've not had to remind them to plow the streets. They've maintained them. So, certainly, would they like the town, you know, to start taking over that responsibility? And I think that's why, um, I think that's why I got the request back in last fall. But because certain items were not complete, we were not in a position to even bring it before the commission to, to fulfill that request, so. But, they've since completed them, and now we can go forward.
Mr. Goshel, it was my understanding, uh, our meeting December eighth, the town attorney would be here. You were going to invite him so that we could ask questions. Now, according to, uh, what was written here, Town Planner Gary Goshel II, uh, the Board of Selectmen have not adopted yet, have they? The relevant subdivision regulations and P O C D revised 2010 will be provided to the commissioners upon request. The most recently recommended revisions by the commission was submitted to the Board of Selectmen and have not yet been adopted. Do you know if they've been adopted?
The, the ones we worked on, I think she was talking about.
The subdivision regulations.
Yes.
Board of Selectmen does not, we, I have not forwarded that draft on to the Board of Selectmen. They, they don't actually vote on that. That's this commission only-
Well, it, it's right here.
That's in the minutes?
Uh, number E.
Page five.
Page five. E.
That's page five in the minutes.
And it said, "You will send a copy of all the revision slash recommendations that are currently under review by the B O S to the commission, commissioners for reference." While the state requires municipalities to update their P O C D every ten years in order to receive funding, the commission agreed to update the plan periodically as necessary. So, I do-
Uh, I would clarify that.
Okay.
So, be- because we did not have any recommended revisions to the P O C D, we had, uh, the last time we updated the P O C D was in 2010. We, we went through the public hearing process. Those revisions were forwarded to the Board of, Board of Selectmen. So, if, if the question is, is our, our current P O C D, which was last revised in 2010,
Mm-hmm.
valid, the answer is yes.
Okay.
So-
But have they adopted the new recommendations? Because I do believe this is the subdivision that, um, we had a couple of meetings on for financing.
Re- regarding the bonding.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So, therefore, which, which, um, which revisions, which rulebook are we going to be looking at?
Current.
To make this decision tonight?
Th- this decision would have to be based on the, the current regulations. The proposed regulation to revise Section Nine, the bonding section of the subdivision regulations, because the, the, the commission has not yet adopted those regulations, would not be-
Well, then, we made a decision on, um, the financing without the Board of Selectmen adopting it.
Because they don't have to. The Board of Selectmen does not have to adopt our subdivision regulations. So, I'm clarifying that as part of the last meeting minutes.
So, the minutes that we accepted, do we have to change that? Because it, I have-
I think we could just note for, in our minutes tonight, that the minutes of Tuesday, December eighth, 2015, Item E in my report, uh, to the commission regarding the subdivision regulations, uh, and the P O C D, um, I think my intent was to say that if the new members of the commission wanted copies, I can certainly provide them upon request. I do have a couple of copies for some of our new members tonight. Um, I have to make copies of the subdivision regulations, um, for them as well. Uh, as far as, I, I don't, I, I guess just to clarify so there's no confusion, the, you know, as it relates to the P O C D, when we go to update that, we have to hold a public hearing. And, part of the statutory requirement is that any proposed revisions to the Plan of Conservation Development must be referred to the Board of Selectmen sixty-five days prior to the holding that public hearing. That's our only obligation. The, the Planning Commission would not forward a, a change in the subdivision regulations to the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, to the Board of Selectmen for comment, unless you so chose to, but we're not statutorily required to.
Okay. I am confused. We made a d- decision without the public hearing and the Board of Selectmen previously on financing, and, and it was stated that they don't have to. Why?
They don't have to. We, we made a-
It doesn't have to go.
Uh, I guess I'm confused. That we, we made a decision to, to take a bond. Is that what you're referring to?
Letter credit.
Letter of credit, right.
Right.
That's because that's the authority the Planning Commission has.
Can I just throw, one second, and, and we voted to do that.
Correct.
As a done deal.
Right. We've, we've accepted the bond. You, you don't, right. So, to accept a bond, to cover the public improvements for this subdivision, the Planning Commission does not need the okay or need to refer that to the Board of Selectmen. Right. So, that, that, you are, you are, under the, the statutes and in your subdivision regulations, you are, you are given that authority.
Right. So, just as a point of clarification, um, when it says that sanitary sewer and stormwater plan has been as-built, is there currently water and, and sewer running in and out of this area that the town is?
Yes.
So, the town is incurring costs and are, are we charging for that?
We're, we're charging for that.
Okay.
So, so, the water and sewer company is charging for the water that's going up there. It's all metered. Every house that gets built, they put a meter in. Um, same with the sewer. It's, they get assessed.
It is sewer, not septic?
It is sewer, yeah.
Is the entire subd- sorry?
The entire subdivision is gonna be on sewer.
It's gonna be on sewer, okay.
And water.
So, how, getting back to our charge, however, what is before us tonight is to make a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for the acceptance of this road complex as defined in the memo to you from Victor Benny. That's, and we usually rely on our subject experts and our departments to make those determinations. So, the, the bond thing, that's in the past. This is about accepting the roads that we have been recommended, it has been recommended to, to accept.
Correct. So, now, I guess just to tie the two together, the bond and the public improvements. So, the bond was approximately one point two million or something, eh, eh, to that effect, roughly. That bond covered the public improvements for this road. So, if the town takes the road over, he's not requesting a reduction in that bond. So, we will have additional funds in the bond funds to cover public improvements moving forward, above and beyond what actually needed to complete the improvements.
Right.
So, for instance, he could, with this, if he chose, he could also request a reduction in the bond amount.
Right. So, the balance of the scope of work becomes smaller, but our bond remains the same.
Right. And the developer has agreed to maintain the bond until they finish
Right.
the subdivision.
Do we have that in writing, that he's agreed to maintain the bond?
I think we have it on the record, uh, I'd have to, there is a letter, but, I mean, I think, even if he requests a reduction, the commission has the discretion not to reduce the bond.
Okay.
Until you're satisfied.
I guess my question is, this was, this has been approved if, if he agree, I mean, if he fulfills the agreement. Is that right?
Um, Peach Lane-
Right.
He came in, they proposed a subdivision, said, "I'm gonna do the certain work."
Right.
And we're, and that work is construct a road.
Right.
And, they've completed that road and everything that's needed for that road to function as a town road. Um, usually, we end with a cul-de-sac. He's proposing a hammerhead for the, temporarily, until we, they finish the other parts. So, and that, all of that work is bonded work, and we'll just continue to hold the money.
Very well. Uh, the commission members have had a chance to review the letter from Victor Benny, our town engineer. Uh, we've briefly reviewed where we, uh, our discussions a few months ago regarding this subdivision. Uh, Mr. Gashel has explained to us that, uh, the contractor has made progress completing the roads and is not currently asking for a reduction in the, um, amount specified in the letter of credit. Um, I can recall, um, and it's, uh, what the town engineer was tasked with, uh, coming up with that number for the value of the work that was remaining to be done. And I believe, I reme- I recall our discussions about the contingency being substantial, so that every, um, there were, we were guaranteed that there would be enough money, uh, available should the town need to complete the work. And based on your comment that the contractor's not asked for a reduction in the bond, this only puts the town in a better position to be able to have the funds to-
Complete the subdivision, should the developer go belly up. Um, and that contingency was set at fifteen percent of actually what was required. So, now you're, you're, I'd have to go and see how much Peach Lane actually, the, eh, the value was associated with Peach Lane, but add that to your fifteen percent, so you're, there's ample dollars available.
And do you expect that this construction on roads will continue over the winter, or is this a, um, some sign of the season changing and a stand-down for a period of time before they resume?
Uh, I believe that they'll, they'll, probably won't continue any additional work on the roads themselves. Asphalt plans are closed, so there's not like they're gonna be able to pave. Um, you know, th- they may be able to do more infrastructure-type work if, uh, they have to run additional stormwater piping for catch basins and things like that. They could do that, but with the ground starting to freeze and, that makes that work difficult. So, they'll probably focus on home building.
Very well. So, the commission is looking for a motion to, um, a rec- we would be, a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to accept those roads? Is there a specific wording we need to use, Mr. Gashel?
Could try to take a stab at it, or?
Go ahead.
Well, I think Mr. Covino had earlier indicated that, uh, you'd be forwarding a favorable recommendation or not favorable. So, you could make it as simple as that, that they, Planning Commission-
Okay.
Based, based on the memo, um, dated January sixth from Victor Benny to-
Right, that's what he was gonna do.
Go ahead, Ernie.
I, I would like to make a motion that based upon the determination of the engineering department, Town of East Lime, that the required public improvements for the above- referenced section of the subdivision have been satisfactorily completed, and the applicant's survey has been certified through the submission of detailed as-built plans that lay out, that the layout of the line and grade of all public improvements are in accordance with the construction plans for the subdivision. As stated in the memo of January sixth, two thousand sixteen to Gary Gashel, Director Planning, from Victor Benny, Town Engineer, I would recommend that we forward a favorable acceptance of the orchard at East Lime, Peach Lane and portions of Arbor Crossing as listed, as stated in the said memo. Uh, that might be a little wordy, but I think it captures it.
Yes, it does.
Very well. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Any questions?
Can we limit it just to that one, that one paragraph, not the whole memo?
Uh, I believe that's just an itemized list of all of the various, uh, as-built sheets that need to be kind of, um, aggregated to complete the picture.
Right. They determined that, yeah, they determined that it was satisfactory comple- uh, completed based upon that list of as-bills.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Six zero zero, motion carries. Um, around eight thirty, we typically take a comfort break. If anybody, anybody like to do that, or we're closed? Okay. Say aye. Okay, uh, Mr. Gashel, is there anything for the subdivisions overview dashboard, uh, for this meeting, if not?
Not, not for this meeting. I just advise that I'm, I'm working with our intern on developing that, and it's currently underway.
Thank you.
I, I, what is a dashboard as opposed to a car?
I'm sorry.
That's a good question. Uh, basically, the, the chairman had asked that, uh, we kind of take a look at subdivisions in, over the last six years, um, six or seven years of what we, we, I guess, uh, during Mr. Shook's tenure, um, he's been involved with, and kind of compare, but you, when you look at that timeframe, uh, we had a bit of a bubble before that. So, he wants to kind of compare how many lots were approved versus how many lots were approved in the six years ahead of that, um, and basically put it on a large board.
Okay.
For explanation.
Something driving down the road.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Not a problem.
Uh, there are no zoning referrals or municipal approvals, uh, referrals. Um, it brings us to our old business, the Plan of Conservation and Development, the East Lime Subdivision Regulation Proposed Changes, and the East Lime Planning Commission Bylaws. Uh, as a result of our meeting, uh, in December, um, specific to the bylaws, I think we agreed that there wasn't any, uh, changes, but I'd like to leave it on the agenda.
Well, in, in your packets, was it revised? Because there was a, a motion to revise the bylaws?
Oh, we did-
So, what you have in your packet is the revised iteration?
What was the revision?
Uh, it was about, uh, the, the order of the agenda items.
Right. And we voted on that six to nothing, to revise it, to move, um, that item to number, that reports by chairman, staff liaison, subcommittees to item three, and then moving all subsequent items down.
Right.
Which I think is what happened.
Yeah, that's what we voted on.
So, so, based on your bylaws, it had to be presented at one meeting, now at this meeting, so you would then, I believe, take another motion to accept them as revised?
I would move to accept them as revised.
Second.
Any seconds? Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Six zero zero. Uh, the town attorney's not present. That brings us to reports. As, uh, chairman, I would like to just welcome the new members and say thank you for your interest in your service. Um, if you're meeting, uh, Gary Gashel, our town planner, for the first time, um, I want you to think of him as a resource. They'll be looking to get you, uh, the hard copies of the Plan of Conservation and Development, uh, and the subdivision rec- uh, regulations, should you, um-
I have that.
Okay?
No.
Uh, and he's always available to answer your questions about, uh, your role here.
Yeah, uh, any questions? My door's always open. You can always give me a call. Um, I can make time to meet, whatever, whatever you prefer. Um, I am available via email as well. Um, I do have copies of the P O C D. There is a, a number of appendices that go with those, that, that plan. Um, I did not print them, 'cause it's a voluminous mass of paper. So, uh, if you do care to acquire a co- hard copy, I can do that. However, all of that information is on our website in a PDF format, so it can be viewed and read from your computer.
If you're having trouble sleeping, it'll put you to sleep.
Exactly.
I've read it, it's, yeah.
Uh, and by way of introduction, I just wanted to mention our alternates. Um, could you just stand and introduce yourself?
Scott.
Thank you. And, um, Mr. Hess is our former-
Who is?
Still, still in the mix. Uh, thank you both.
Ex officio.
Oh, hey, oh, yeah, we're coming, we're coming to them. And our ex officio is for this, uh, annual cycle, Ms. Holly Cheeseman. Welcome, Holly.
Thank you.
Great to see you.
Thank you again.
Would you like to make any comments?
Uh, just briefly, the Board of Selectmen met last week on January sixth following the public hearing on an ordinance that would apply, um, building fees, uh, fees for building and demolition permits on town projects in excess of two million dollars. Uh, prior to that, there had, they, these had not been applied, but given the scope of some of the larger projects, all of a sudden, you're incurring building inspector fees, fire marshal fees. This way, they would be included in a, let's say, a bonding package, so you're not having to pay these fees out of current operating expenses. Uh, so that, it was presented to public hearing. We voted to approve that. We authorized the first election to sign an ICE program grant. Uh, this is a grant we're applying for conjunction with New London. It is for supplying, um, heavy equipment, uh, to towns as launching partner with a, you know, underserved community. It's to acquire a large grapple truck, uh, in effect New London and East Lime only have to pay twenty percent of the costs. If it can be housed in New London, they will pay for the maintenance and upkeep, and we can share its use. It will be available to move large items should we have another major storm, large trees, you know, anything major. Um, New London uses it because they still have a lot of, um, on-street, you know, big furniture pickups, but it's a good deal for the town because in effect, we're, you know, it's being paid eighty percent by the federal government, and New London's paying most of the costs. We have fifty, fifty percent use of it. So, we did authorize the first election to enter into this, um, interlocal agreement, and that will move the grant forward. There's no guarantee we'll get it, but it was felt it was worth.
Well, and, and not to interrupt you, Ms. Cheeseman, just kind of as clarification, um, with that, I believe there was some discussion that we aren't even, we're using money from selling two trucks to New London, I think, if I remember correctly.
Yes, we had two, uh, I think that the old style garbage trucks. New London does not have the pick-up and dump trucks, so these are two of our former garbage trucks that we sold to New London. We're required to come up with, I think it was seventeen thousand dollars is our share of this. So, we're taking the seventeen thousand dollars that New London paid us to pay for our share of this new, new truck. So, we're not currently really clouded pocket on that. Uh, the other items, we made some, um, appointments to vacancies on boards and commissions, and we authorized, uh, on the recommendation of Sergeant Land Shet, the, um, life-saving awards be offered to two, uh, local East Lime policemen, Lindsay Cotello, and I can't remember the other officer, who were called to a house where a, um, young man was unresponsive because of a heroin overdose. They administered Narcan and were able to revive him, and his life was safe. And, that was pretty much, I mean-
Thank you. Uh, was there any talk about the boardwalk and, uh, expected data completion?
Uh, it's, you know, it's gradually being moved down. I think they're looking at just another couple of months before it should be ready.
I was, I was there. There was some public discussion from a couple of members of the public about their frustration that it wasn't done.
But they didn't provide a date?
Not, not that I heard. There might have been.
You know, there are events scheduled in early April.
Yeah.
And it was felt that they will be able to be helped.
I think it was a general, "It'll be done," and I think early spring was, was at least the sense that I got.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, brings us to our zoning agenda and zoning representative calendar. I hope everybody is excited as I am about how cool it is to have it all laid out on one sheet.
Yeah.
In the back, apathetically.
Yep. So, if we need to horse straight and switch things, uh, usually our most valuable player is Rita, and she's happy to cover for anybody.
Yes.
Hey, I was there.
But it looks like our next one would be, uh, January twenty-one is Ms. Bangston.
Yep.
And then, uh, Ernie, you'd be in February four. So, um-
And that's at seven thirty, correct?
We should put that on-
Zoning by seven thirty.
Yes.
Totally right.
Your meetings are seven thirty?
Seven.
Because I did think it was at seven, and I showed up at seven.
They're not the early bird get the worm type of people that we are.
Yeah, but their meetings are lightning.
We're not like that either. That brings us to D R, Sustainable Development and Climate Adaptation Subcommittee.
So, that's moving forward, I spoke with Dr. Adam Welschel today, I'm putting together a invitation that will go out hopefully the next week or two, and probably be early spring, we'll be holding a workshop, it'll be more of a regional type workshop incorporating other towns, inviting them here, but the Nature Conservancy will be helping us out with that. So, it's in progress.
Very well. Francine Schwartz was our former member of that, with the changing of the guard here, do you want to assign, do you think that that?
As a chairman, you get to assign, if there's any, unless there's volunteers that just want to.
Well, I don't think it's pressing, but I would say that this is an important subcommittee, it's our only real subcommittee. Mr. Gashel has been able, there's tremendous resources available to this subcommittee, one of which is Dr. Welchel, Adam Welchel.
Adam Welchel, yep.
So, I wouldn't, I won't, I don't think we need to sell this this evening, but I would encourage anybody who's, might be interested in that subcommittee to contact Mr. Gashel over the next couple of weeks. And at our next meeting, if we have a volunteer, we'll assign it. And it is quite interesting, we learned a little bit about water time from Mr. Carlson, the, the maps that are created by Dr. Welchel show where the hurricane water will.
Flood? Inundate.
Inundate.
So, he has, yeah, a projection that goes out to twenty eighty, and it, the idea is if the glacial, you know, polar caps melt and sea level rises is as great as it could be, what that would look like. He's also provided a habitat migration study for salt marsh advancement, and what that would look like based on our coastline. And my understanding, he's actually done that for the entire state along Long Island Sound, that's been completed. So, it's really interesting information as we try to adapt to the climate.
And just in the spirit of pumping up interest in this committee, I was fascinated to learn that the water doesn't go necessarily where we all would think it would go. The, it was news to me how low the bridge approach is in Niantic, and as you go to Waterford, you actually, you actually drop very low to the water, and that road gets flooded first, that's one of the, and when you think about how our town circulates and flows, when you lose that connection to Waterford, the next best bet is all the way up at Golden Spur. Our town is laid out in such a way that we're uniquely compromised when we have these rain events. Rocky Neck State Park also floods almost completely in a lot of those models.
Correct. So, you know, I think the trend is, you know, is the climate changing? It is, the question is, you know, we get hit by a meteor and go to nuclear winter, so, but moving forward, I think it's wise to, you know, we have seen a measurable increase in Long Island Sound, particularly in Guilford, they've done some extensive study and work there measuring that. So, I think it's moving forward in terms of planning, coming up with a plan at least to acknowledge it and educate the public, if not anything else, and possibly how do we work that into the Plan of Conservation and Development?